I'm going to call the Granby Planning Board meeting to order November 25th at 5:40 PM. I'm going to jump right to the A and R, seeing we've kept you waiting here. Can you just, if you don't mind, come up and present what you're trying to do? This is on Truby Street?
Yeah, 62 Truby Street, I'm applying for A and R for my mom's old house. I've got the application. Check there. I've got a check to put out. These are all copies that you folks, I guess, require. I think there may be five of the regular prints. All five or four is fine?
Four is fine.
Yeah.
Two Mylars?
Yeah, I should ask two Mylars, I think five prints. If I could maybe keep one, so I can have.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so... This is on Truby Street. They own all this property here and they're cutting out the homestead. Is that correct?
Right. 3,1508 stories.
Plenty there. Plenty of frontage. Meets all the... Appears to meet all the requirements. Glory to look at.
I am, I know.
First house on Truby, I don't know if it's a... Coming from.
Yeah. Is that your father's?
Yeah, with my mom and dad, they passed away and the mountains in the family and we want to sell it, but we want to keep for.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry to hear that. I talked to him that one time in Lipe.
Well, they did.
He showed me how to make a stone wall.
Oh, okay, are you the fellow that has the cape of?
Yeah, of the road.
And walked by your house.
He says you can fix that one. If I can do it, you can do it.
Well, if you ever need a good stone, raise in my... My phone along. He's been here from Portugal probably about seven years, but he works construction and probably. That was a special thing in rural country.
Okay, unless anybody has some questions here, I'll entertain a motion to approve the A and R.
We'll make a motion to approve the A and R as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Second, and further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Today's the 25th, right?
Yes.
Yeah, a buddy of mine's father.
Hey, does anybody want to listen?
Same thing, Mason does a lot of stuff.
Yeah. Well, I live next door and I have a wall that I built. Actually, it was my grandmother. Worked on it recently. Balance of it, I only found my dad. That's a little more.
I think he capped the top. Still looks good after, he said it was about 30.
Eighty-six when he built the house.
Yeah, forty-eight.
I held him with it. I did the grunt work for you. Hand me this, go get this.
We did that on Brooklyn.
Yep.
Well, it's a nice spot there, you shouldn't have a... You shouldn't have a hurricane zone.
Should be. So, do you ever get a lounge?
Every now and then, I don't.
You have a nice little thing.
Yeah. Well, we love it, we love it.
Those lots were all for sale at the same time. And when I... When I quieted about it, somebody snapped it out from under me.
Had a lot of people stop over.
I'm happy we're all over.
Yes. I think that's the only...
The fellow that built that nice big thing. Say, the lounge is black, that one.
Yeah. Does he own both those lots?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think he bought them off a Red McKenzie.
But all areas in this area. Well, when we first built them, yeah. That was full of lake.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Beavers had backed it up, it was kind of neat watching the waterfall. The wildlife down there. With the beavers, it stained pretty quick.
Feels like they got extra soon.
He does. He wants to take, yeah, he'll keep the three and...
No, you should have four.
Four plus the mine. Well, you take one of the Mylars, we'll get three for re-planting. Does that work now? When you say recording, I gotta bring it to the registry to eat, is that what it is? It's not making news like a belt or?
Yeah, I mean, typically, he would just take the Mylar and it's relatively easy to just say, I'm signing this.
Yeah.
And then they'll record it, just as long as it has what it needs from the board.
Yeah, a signature.
Yeah, it's okay.
Usually it's the surveyor or somebody that goes down and does it.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, you have one. Okay.
So, we're good, gentlemen? We're good. Good luck.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good night. So... This was a letter that the... The building commissioners sent with a select board with concerns with the... Septory dwelling units. I'm not so sure there's anything for us to do with this.
I think it's the question of whether and if this is something that you want to explore further. What towns are doing to address ADUs is allowing the planning board or ZDA to continue to have a process where they are looking at least at a site. If not, then it's all done by the building department. So then you will not see any ADUs.
So, we don't... We don't review residential.
That's right.
There's a... There's bylaws out there that discuss setbacks, so on and so forth. But we never gotten... The only time we ever get involved with anything residential is if there's an accessory building that exceeds the 1,200 square feet.
And it's specifically a barn or garage? That's over 1,200 square feet?
An accessory building. Not attached. So... Unless I'm missing something, I don't know why we would... We don't get involved where a shed goes, we don't get involved where a building goes if it's under 1,200 square feet. We don't get involved in whether or not the septic system has the capacity. I don't know if I want to get involved. From the board's perspective, I... The state's mandating that they're allowed. And as long as they meet the setbacks... Unless someone wants us to... To... File an article to change setbacks because of it. But our setbacks are, I mean, I don't think you want to put one of these units... What's our setback? Fifteen and... fifteen on the sideline? Forty off the frontage?
Fifteen, forty off the front.
Twenty off the rear. Twenty off the rear, I don't... Right, I don't.
Yeah, it's not different, so what you would be relying on is, in your dimensional table, is structures other than dwellings, because you would have to treat this as an accessory. Right? So, the setbacks and the regulations will be based on that. And those match exactly as your single-family home, I think. I think that the only thing that may be different... It is different, is if there's an existing single-family home on a parcel that is not in a residential zone. So, it's currently a non-conforming residential use in, let's say, your industrial zone or your commercial zone. You would allow for an ADU and it would have to meet the dimensional regulations as stated in structures other than dwellings in those particular districts. The other consideration is...
Well, how exactly does the Mass General law read allowing the ADUs?
So, um, the... The back of that, I think, Leonard's, there's a... From KP Law, there is a summary of that law. And if you look at page one, number one A, there is a new definition of the ADU. Which requires... Is basically, is there's a new definition and the town will be operating with this new definition. The town has not identified ADU as a use in their zoning bylaw, does not need to do that. However, what towns like to do is add the use, just because it is a use that would be allowed in accordance with.
So, what you said, you know... If there's a pre-existing non-conforming use, in other words, a residential setting in a commercial zone, which we do have that. Then... If it's residential, then it would... It could put the ADU on, we wouldn't have any say over that.
You wouldn't. Yeah, an ADU could be allowed wherever there is a single-family.
Yeah, so I... That's why I'm saying, I don't see where there's anything...
I think one of the... One of the protections that towns typically include in that is not allowing that ADU to be used for any short-term rental and spelling that out for Airbnb-type uses. It is specifically for housing. Any sort of... You don't currently have a bylaw, right? So, you're not necessarily addressing ADUs.
So, what's the purpose of the ADUs? Why did the state?
It's to be able to develop, to construct housing. Where... Where you have a single-family home, that was the intention of the law, was to be able to construct additional housing.
For what purpose?
Because there... The state has identified a need for housing units, so...
So... So... They're dictating that to us?
That's correct.
And let's say you decide to build one to house a family member. Or... 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 Let's just stick with the family. Family member passes, now you're stuck, now you're sitting here with a home that you just spent $150,000 or $250,000 as an ADU. Now you can't do anything with it. Can't rent it. Can't Airbnb it.
You would... You would be able to rent it.
What restrictions would the planning or zone want to put on that?
I think really the only restrictions that the planning, if they want to, is to look at the design to ensure that they have a opportunity to address the way that it looks and that it meets your typical site plan criteria. That's really it. I mean, if you want none of the review to go through the planning board, then it's dictated by state law and you just will not have a zoning bylaw that spells out what is required. Yeah, so, I mean, the thing is you don't currently have a zoning bylaw. The towns that are amending their zoning bylaw are trying to bring it into conformance, but still have the opportunity to review them. So... Yeah, it would be a permitted use, no matter what. But if the... If the... There was no review by a board like yours or the ZDA, it would all be done at the building department, just conforming with the dimensional regulations as they allow use and... And... And, yeah, whether or not there was a presence of a single family.
Yeah, I'm not so sure, you know, we... I'm not so sure we have the authority to say, well, it's got to be at least a two-acre building.
You don't. You don't have that authority. It is very specific to the way that it looks and...
That's all subjective, how it looks. You may like something, I don't, vice versa.
It's a tiny home, it could look like a dolphin.
Yeah, so, I mean... It's got to be, what, 900 square feet or less?
So, the way that the law reads, it's 900 square feet or half the size of the principal dwelling, whichever is less.
Who confirms that?
It would be the building department.
Building department.
Yeah. But obviously, if it came... If there was a process where the planning board was the first one to take a look at the site plan, then those conversations would happen at the planning board, but...
I think a lot of this is going to self-manage itself to... The septic system, the well setback, all has to be able to support it.
That's correct, so, I mean...
And if they need to set that.
What about driveways? That come into play in that?
I'm sure it does, but I don't... I don't know. Certainly can't drive over your septic system. I don't know what type of regulations with the planning board. We don't see anything on residential now as it is.
You're right, no. That's not... It's atypical, it's not typical that you would be reviewing any sort of single-family home as it is a principal dwelling. Again, you know, this is...
Okay, let's say we want to review it for adequate parking.
Requires one parking space, that's what the state law says.
Doesn't have to be paved, doesn't have... I mean, it can't be on-street parking, but there's already, I don't...
Let's see. I mean, I think the other... The other component is, sure, if you are okay with the planning board not seeing an ADU as it is dictated in state law, but want to provide an opportunity for those applicants who are looking at ADUs greater than 900 square feet or greater than the required amount based on the state law, then you would need to create a permitting mechanism for that, because you currently do not have one.
So, the state's saying by right, 900 or less. 900 and above... They're saying they can't be any more than half the size of the current dwelling.
900 or above, there's no... That you cannot do that under the state zoning. So, there is no way for a resident, there's no permitting mechanism for anything accessory dwelling in it greater than 900 square feet or greater than half the size of the...
Or greater than half the size of it.
Correct.
So, if it was a thousand-square-foot home, you couldn't go more than 500 square feet.
Okay, correct.
So...
That would be, you couldn't go more than 500 square feet and that would be permitted without any sort of...
So, if you got a 2,000-square-foot, it's 900?
Yes.
I'm all for allowing these, especially if they're being built to take care of aging family or just disabled family or... I'm all for it. But I don't... I don't feel like I should... I want to be regulating what somebody's doing on their private property. If the states are to say, we can do it?
I don't want to. I mean, I'm curious, I have questions like, how do these ADUs get water in a town like this where we're primarily well-watered?
You would need to demonstrate it in your site plan to the building inspector and to those that would need to approve a structure like that. So, like Jim said, you would need to get your permits from the Board of Health as well. But it's really, what is the planning board's role, if any? To say, this makes sense here. And it really, you can't, I mean, it's, this makes sense here and the criteria by which you would say... So, let me just give you an example of a community that had an ADU bylaw, but are amending it to make sure that it conforms to the state act. It's not relying on the criteria of the site plan approval, they only have four criteria that they are acting upon to ensure that it's an allowed under-site plan review. The ADU shall minimize tree vegetation and soil removal and grade changes. Architectural style should be compatible with the existing principal dwelling on the subject property. ADU shall be serviced with adequate water supply and sewer or septic service. The plan shall demonstrate adequate parking as required hereunder and shall maximize convenience and safety for vehicular and pedestrian movement within the property and in relation to adjacent ways. The planning board for that community is using those four criteria to approve an ADU. And as you know, site plans, typically you're already going through, you're going to typically approve it with either some minor conditions or if they don't have the materials that they need, then you deny it and the expectation is they're going to come back with a conforming site plan.
So, with that being said, they'd be looking for the planning board to sign off on it and the planning board to to assure that the septic system, we have to go to the Board of Health, make sure the septic system complies, the well complies with the additional unit, the parking is...
Sufficient.
Sufficient.
The thing that when you approve site plan approvals, you are not approving the... You have, you say that it shall comply with those regulations, you're not necessarily waiting for those approvals, you're saying that it shall comply with that. So, after the planning board acts, you're not typically involved with septic review or, you know, water and that vegetation removal. You may be, you know, you may be discussing landscaping, but to an extent that it makes sense within the context of that particular development on the property, but that community has four criteria by which they are assessing an ADU and addressing the applicant, when an application comes in. I guess, you know, based on the request and the select board letter, the response from the planning board, if there is none or if there is one that suggests that the planning board is fine with allowing the state regulations to supersede, you know, what processes look like and that the building department will ensure that it meets all of the state law. I think one of the things that if you're looking, if you have some foresight with regards to accessory dwelling units and introducing the concept to the community is maybe addressing this fact in the future that you will need a special permit for anything greater than 900 feet or greater than half the size of the principal unit in a, you know, that wouldn't, would be in addition to the state law. So, I don't know, I guess it really is up to the board on how they may want to look at creating an accessory dwelling.
So, that's a little different, because the state's mandating what we need, what we have to allow, provided it makes, meets a certain criteria. If this board wanted to go above and beyond that, we could do that now, that would have nothing to do with what the state's mandating. If we proposed an article to the town to approve these ADUs up to 1,500 square feet.
With a special permit?
With a special permit.
Yeah, that's a presumption, like, if you wanted to...
But we're not being asked to do that.
No, you're not.
We're just asking, what we're being asked to do right now is to review it, what the state's mandating, to see if we have, if there's any input that we feel we should... And I can't, we don't typically get involved in residential. A half-acre or a full-acre lot, building lot, you're going to have a hard time fitting an ADU in by meeting setbacks and the septic system. Now, if you've got five acres and you want to put an ADU, I couldn't care less.
Sure.
You know what I mean? There's plenty of... Of two acres or whatever, you've got plenty of room for.
Yeah, there's going to be already things that are prohibited to develop them. So, you're right, you know. Yeah, there's going to be already things that are prohibited to develop them, so you're right, you know.
I can't think of anything that I. I feel that the town, we should be concerned. With, on the town's behalf. And we're not doing residential anywhere. If it goes over twelve hundred square feet, then that kicks in. In this case, anything over nine hundred square feet, they would need a, 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 approval from ZBA. There's a process in place. It just happens to be that the house is. Two thousand square feet, and they want to put in a full thousand square feet, so they can go to the ZBA and ask for a. Amendment, or a, not an amendment, but a, um. You know, for the, for the appeal on that.
And still be considered an ADU?
And then, and then to go to the appeal through ZBA. Then they would, they would ask us to take a look at the site plan and see if there's going to be any. So the process is there.
For greater than.
For greater than. Otherwise, we don't really have any say.
So, so is your suggestion that if it's greater than. If, if the planning board is waiving. A process by which they would take a look at a site plan for a. An accessory dwelling unit that met the state standards. Then, if someone wanted to come in. With an accessory dwelling unit that was greater than the state, what the state standards were. They would file.
File with the Board of Appeals, zoning Board of Appeals.
A special permit?
Yeah.
So we would have to create a, basically a use.
So, so. No, because, because ZBA would say it's not allowed, period, or they'd say. Yeah, we'll allow it, there's some circumstances here, hardship, whatever, we'll allow it, provided. Planning board looks at it, that there's no detrimental impact to it. Just like we do with twelve hundred square feet of an accessory building.
Well, you do that because you have a bottom, you have a use that says.
Well, this, this would. I'm not, this would kick in the same way, though.
What would the use be?
I mean, you would probably say a resident, an accessory dwelling unit. And you would have to provide a definition. For it's, it's a resident accessory to a residential principal dwelling unit that is greater than nine hundred square feet. And maybe that's your cutoff. And you miss the people that, you know, cannot meet between the five, whatever, the people that are not able to meet that. Less than the principal unit. Yeah, I mean, it is. I don't know, I guess I would seek. An illegal opinion as to whether or not. You could rely on the power of the zoning Board of Appeals to say that. There is. No zoning law that dictates. The process by which an accessory dwelling unit in the town of Granby. Could bypass. The requirements of the state bylaw, of the state legislation. So, because there's no zoning bylaw. I don't know if the, was ZBA can. Be that entity that says you are requesting a special permit or a variance. From a state act, a state law. But again, I think that's a future conversation, on whether or not you would want. Those larger residential, those accessory dwellings.
It could be the other end of the spectrum, though, too. The guy lives in a thousand-foot house. Square foot house, who wants to build a nine hundred.
Sure.
Square foot ADU. That might, in our eyes, might be allowable.
Not, not by right.
Not by right.
Right. It could be, I mean, that's a, that's, that's policy, and we, we talked about this briefly. When we were looking at. The barns and garages for even a greater amount, and having the planning board bypass. A certain, up to like fifteen hundred, I can't remember, but we were looking at a greater size. Because we were getting a series of permits, and it was like, we're just issuing special permits.
And they won't be on the none.
So, but I think, you know, the conversation ended there, you know, but. Yeah, it's a, it's a policy question, it's a definitely something where you'd be.
So, so here, here would be my take on this. Unless there's some compelling. Issue that we need to address. I would. Which I can't think of right now, because we typically don't get involved in residential. I would say, let it ride. I would tell the select board that. We feel that, we feel that, that the, the current bylaws. Would help navigate these per, I mean, what are we going to do, I'll give you. What, what would we do, change the setbacks and say, no, now we want fifty-foot setbacks to make them. To make them, they're not. It's not feasible, you can't do it, because the setbacks are too, they're too, so that would be, why would we do that? I would say leave it everything the way it is, and, and after a year, if there becomes an issue or something, we say. You know what? Maybe we should take a look at this, this has come up once out of ten.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's a conversation, like, I think to your point, it's. The town does not currently have an accessory dwelling unit bylaw, the state has dictated one. So the building department will be reviewing these ADUs as they come in. They'll need to conform with the underlying zoning district. And the planning board, you know, will not be reviewing them, I mean, that's what the gist is. Um, and. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to also see what. Clarity the town needs to have, and why, if. If and why the, the planning board needs to be involved with a review in the first place, because it is a. A, a, a state law that you're requiring them, they need to conform. They need, and they have these particular requirements, the building department will ensure that those, uh, requirements are met. Why, I mean. I don't know, so I think you bring up a great point, is if. There currently is no review process, why could you need to include one? Um, especially since there's really nothing, no particular characteristics that you can really dictate, right? Um, it's going to meet setbacks, it's going to have a parking space, it's going to be less than nine hundred square feet for less. Than half of the size of a principal unit, that's the way that it's going to get approved.
There's nothing there that says it has to be on one floor. Can be on two floors.
To be on two floors, it can be detached product, it can be attached. I mean, I, I think what we can do is. As you mentioned, I think it's crafting a letter that suggests that. There was a conversation that took place today with the board, and. For the purposes of the board not necessarily getting. Being involved with the review process of a single family home. Uh, the new legislation through the state law. Covers, you know, the requirements that are needed for an accessory dwelling unit to be developed here in town. That, there is, there's a suggestion that there's no bylaw that needs to be explored. Um, obviously, another entity can create a bylaw and. Have the public, it would need to have a public.
Planning.
So if the select board thought that that was what they needed, or what the town needed. They could craft one, and then bring that to the planning board as a typical public hearing. And you would review it. But if the planning board, you know, if the, if the. A new conversation with the planning board is that there is. You feel like you don't necessarily need to address it through a zoning bylaw. Then, you know, just kind of leave it there, someone, if they want to craft something, would take the mantle.
What do you think, Jason? So that's for ADUs, and there's some things on here about the storage, too?
That was another request, to be, to clarify storage. In the zoning, which is not really clarified. These are your ever-so-popular public storage facilities. That communities. Have been talking about as, as far as ways to find criteria to cite them in town. Um, you know, I think as you read there. It has been permitted in the past under services. Which, in accordance with the, the letter from the building commissioner. Is not typical to, you know, say that you're equating public, public, a public storage facility. As a service.
Well. So the second piece of it. They've asked us to look into, which. I agree, there's a lot of, there's a, you know, he may run into this recently. Which I believe he did with, with the, um. Storage unit at, uh, no, no, no. Right next to Finsill. I think we. Take a look at that when we're looking at everything else that we've got. I don't know if this is a priority over some of the other things we're talking about changing in the.
I mean, I think. I don't know if it's a priority, I think lots of communities are having to deal with it as a priority, because. They are coming on board and coming fast, that's like the new land uses, where can we put a public, uh, storage facility? Um, so what I can do is, we recently, in another community, adopted it as a use. So it's, if you adopt a use and just say that it's allowed where you allow. At least where you would imagine allowing those types of facilities. Um, not necessarily coming up with any new criteria. Um, because it would just need to meet the dimensional regulations, but how they typically addressed it is allow, having a use. That way, you don't have to question. This facility, and whether or not they would be permitted in this particular area.
No, the, so the. This was our Marion, Steve Marion.
Right.
And. What he was doing was putting up garages, they weren't just storage, they were, they were. Basically going to be used, well. Hopefully being used for, um, tradespeople.
Sure.
Which I thought was a good idea, because if, if you're running out of your. Running a small business out of your dwelling. Places like these are, are affordable. And it gets you out of a residential setting, right? I just put this on the list with all the other things we need to.
Okay. That's an easy one, yeah, I can.
We gotta have. We can't just.
Right, no, so what, we briefly talked about this maybe at two meetings ago, where. Maybe, um, either if the board wants to have a meeting, one more meeting this month, and in December, or if. You know, there's just communication that we'll have a couple of workshop meetings where we're kind of. Talking about maybe some general zoning bylaw amendments, um, that would be primed for town meeting in the spring. Um, to do that in January, um, at least present a list.
Well, didn't, didn't we apply for a grant to get some money that?
You did, uh, I don't know the, if that was awarded yet. There's going to be another opportunity, which, um. If the board wants to, maybe at this meeting, just take an action that says, have, can prepare a DLTA. Um, depending on if the board is meeting, I don't know if the board is meeting. But there was just a recent announcement about district local technical assistance, which is another avenue. For funding for, um, that would fund our, at PVPC time to do certain things, plans. Um, review zoning, do zoning.
Cursory review of our.
So, yeah, that, that was, I'm hoping that the town receives that larger grant fund to do that. Because there probably would be some engagement around this, but in the absence of that grant, if the town does not get that. My suggestion would be to do a review using DLTA, and I can help craft. Um, that, and that would be like part one of the work. But I, I, I think part of the conversation is too, is. Even after the review, we have identified some changes, minor changes. You know, maybe some, this introduction of this particular use, if the board wants to do also looking at. Those particular bylaws and doing it for town meeting.
I'm all in favor of seeing if there's, you know, see if there's another smaller grant out there to help us.
Okay.
What I don't want to do is, some of the things that have been done in the past is. Go into a town meeting and then having it flipped around.
Sure.
Too much is done on the floor, that, you know. And I want to make sure that we do a review, we, I don't know. What'll come out of the review, I know there's a lot of things in there that need to be, and when, and that need to be adjusted. Sometimes when you adjust one thing. It has an impact on something else, that's why I want to make sure that we do this, we do it, do it right with some help.
Yeah.
You know, we're not experts here, we're, you know, we're part-time board, so. We can get somebody in there like yourself, or another colleague to help us navigate through this.
Yeah. So, yeah, so, yeah, I think that's a, a great point, um. So we will, I, you know, I will help craft something that the town can send for, for that particular grant. Especially if we don't know when that other grant, that's, that grant award is coming. Um, but the other grant award will be a little more robust. Um, but the other grant award will be a little more robust and, you know, we can definitely have more conversations around. That and it's a longer timeframe. Um, I guess the other, one of the other. Points that is, that we will need to address is. Um, the town will be moving forward on the stormwater amendment. So there is a town by law that needs to be passed. There's currently nothing in the books, but. Um, you know, E P A has said that the town needs to have an appropriate by law by then. With that said. Um, there probably will be need to, needing to address some amendments. Um, to the town zoning and the subdivision regulations. In parallel to. So. I probably will be working with the town on. Ensuring that the bylaw gets passed, the stormwater by law. But at the same time. Identifying if there is a need. To bring forward any zoning to align. And you'd have.
The bylaw has to, the, the. The stormwater has to be passed first.
That's correct.
I know Dave, Dave's been working on that.
Yeah. And so, yeah, I I was in town on Wednesday. Um, and briefly had a conversation about the approach that the town may want to take. I think they're getting some clarity from E P A. As to the language they can use. Um, but the thing that also needs to be passed is. In the store, in the regulations, it's, it really is just the mention of adhering to the standards of the stormwater. By law. So it's, as you were mentioning, Jim, it's, it's bringing attention to. The way that it's currently written in the zoning, in the. Uh, subdivision regs. That need to align with now, let me tell them. Um, that will address that. So if any bylaws come to fruition, it will be those, it will, you know. Because I'll be. Working with. Dave and, you know, whatever that particular process looks like. Will have identified any changes to the zoning and subdivision rights.
Yeah, it would be good to know if. For the town to vote on it to, to approve it. They would probably want to know what the impact is going to be.
Sure.
What's the, what's the, what's the other side? What's the flip side of this?
If you don't pass, what does that mean? Right? So. Um, so that's the other kind of thing that is happening. Uh, but I will move forward with the grant when that comes up, probably just need a signature.
Well, the last thing I want to do is drink something to the floor. And, and. Not be real comfortable with it and then. Have it amended and amended and amended.
Yeah.
I'd like to be able to say this is. These are the, the articles that we're looking to change on the bylaws. This is why. This is, this is what other towns, similar sites have done. And based on what each of these articles are, or each of these amendments. To our bylaws are. Some cases that. Category categorize them to be in one article. And then, and then in other situations, keep them separate.
Mm hmm.
So that one doesn't. Drag the rest of them down.
Right. There's a strategy to the way those are passed.
Passed or denied, I just don't.
Right.
Don't, um. Try and keep them all. If it's.
Yeah.
It's a site plan review on storm water, then let's keep all that stuff together.
Mm hmm.
It's, if it's eighty use, then let's keep all the eighty stuff together.
Right.
That kind of. Okay. What else do we have?
So you have approval of um two sets of minutes that I brought to the last meeting um that we've never quorumed. Did I attend those to you?
On today? We'll have a court.
Those were meeting minutes. October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, September twenty third.
If you don't have copies of those, I don't see them here.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, as written.
Real second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for September twenty third, twenty twenty four, as presented.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I do have one last comment with what the board determines. Um, I, so. I was here on Wednesday and I was talking to a prospective applicant. For um expansion of uses in the Macduff school. So there is a conversation right now. Should be forthcoming, but just working with the applicants very early in the process.
Such as?
Addition of. Housing for. The instructors. And um. Recreation. Space. So. That's forthcoming.
Now, you had this conversation on a. Just somebody bumped into or somebody that actually formally came into town?
Someone came into town and I sat some time um and I met them at town hall, just navigating the. Current regulations. And I'm also telling them what they probably will need to do, which is go to COMCOM. There are some things you need to clarify there. But um. What I'm hoping is part of the conversation is. That there would be, as is typical with any forthcoming site plan or special permit. Conversation with Tom Strapp. Um, for, you know, clarity on codes, just so that it's efficient as possible. With review.
Yeah, I would think that we'd, we would want to help streamline anything we could do to help, help them move. What they're, what they're looking to do over there. They're, they're a pretty important asset to this town right now.
Yes. So that's the intent. Um. It's been a little challenging, but I think we're getting there. Yeah. And hopefully I have a. Yeah, I think the intent is to file something in the, in the early new year, but they're still kind of in their like infancy of, this is the site. What can I do here? Things like that. Where can I do it? And, you know, this is a. Architect. Not local, so. So that's just a, a note.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. I'll second that motion.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.